All right, it is seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. I would recognize Selectman Norrell to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of the Board of Selectmen are present. Our next agenda item is approval of meeting minutes.
Selectman Norrell would move to approve the meeting minutes for Tuesday, April 16th, 2021, for the public hearing with the Town of East Windsor and the Broebel Fire Department.
So that's for February 16th?
Right. Right.
Is there a second?
Selectman Muska will second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Board of Selectmen Budget Workshop Minutes.
Selectman Muska will move to approve the Board of Selectmen Budget Workshop Minutes from February 16th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Marie D'Sousa will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion or correction? Seeing none, Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Norrell?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Or regular meeting minutes?
Selectman Muska will move to approve the Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting Minutes from March 4th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion or corrections?
Jason, I just have a question on page 11.
Okay.
Yeah, on page 11, under the motion, when we come up with all the figures, the breakout, under the fire marshal line, on this report, it says 21,138, but on the minutes that we just approved for February 16th, is what I had written down in my notes, it was 20,280 for the fire marshal, so it's a difference of 858. Was there a change made that I don't recall?
There was, and we can postpone these if you want, and I can get clarification.
No, as long as you guys remember there was a change that was made, it's just that it... I just wanted to verify it.
Yeah, hold on one second, I'll tell you what the number they used last night was.
Hello?
One second. Yeah, that's the correct number. The 959. Amy looked at that the other day.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so this is okay. Alright, that's all I had.
And incidentally, just because the numbers are different from one meeting to another doesn't mean that they're not accurate from one meeting to the other, because...
I wasn't questioning the accuracy, but I was just questioning my memory.
That's the correct number.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion or corrections? Seeing none, Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Norrell?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman?
Aye.
How about April, public hearing from March 4th?
Marie D'Sousa will make a motion to accept the public hearing minutes of March 4th, 2021 as presented.
Is there a second?
Selectman Muska will second.
Any further discussion or corrections? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Norrell?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Okay. Public participation, this is one of the public's two opportunities to address members of the board. Keep in mind, this is a one-way discussion, we don't do the back and forth. If you'd like to speak, kindly indicate as such, give your name and your address for the record. Are there any comments from members of the public? Seeing none, we will move on to communications. There was an addendum to the agenda that was sent around to the members of the board earlier today. Peg, I'll make sure you get a copy. I'll make sure you get a copy right now. So, there's been some interest on the work that's being undertaken at the town park, and I would just offer the following statement for the record. We are aware that some residents have some questions and concerns about the recent improvement activity taking place at East Windsor Park. By this message, I wanted to provide some clarity to the projects that are underway. Last year, budding property owners were notified by mail that there would be tree removal work taking place at the park. But butters were given an opportunity to ask questions that they may have, and we specifically visited the one person who came forward at her home to address her concerns. We've been in touch with an arborist and a landscape architect to confirm both the need for the trees to be removed and to design improvements afterwards. That work is still in process, and so we continue to ask for patience until the project is complete. The trees that had lined the park had become a cause for concern from a public safety standpoint and from a liability standpoint. In a number of recent weather events, trees had fallen onto a butter's property, causing damage to sheds and lawns. This had resulted in the town having to repair that damage. Due to the proximity in which the trees were initially planted, the interior trees did not properly root, leading to additional instability. When the exterior trees were removed, the interior trees would have been weaker and in more dire likelihood of causing additional damage. Further, removal of the trees along the perimeter added more than three quarters of an acre to the park grounds. We will be putting in a walking trail along the perimeter, installing benches and other aesthetic improvements, and planting some decorative trees. Most of the project was paid for out of capital non-recurring fund available in the budget and for specifically this purpose. The balance of the cost is borne out of the Parks and Recreation Program money. The work was contracted to Beaver Tree Removal, who is the town's preferred vendor for tree work. All of our preferred vendors are put out to bid from time to time to ensure that we're capitalizing on a low price. Again, we stress that the project is underway, and we ask for people's patience as we complete the job. As early as next week, seeding and fertilizing is likely to take place, and we anticipate the freshly renovated park will be ready for the opening of the season this year. So that's that. I also included correspondence to our congressional delegate, our US Congressional delegation, pertaining to the Equality Act that was approved by this board last meeting. So there's a copy of the letter I sent to each of John Larson, Chris Murphy, and Richard Blumenthal. And so, at this point, I'd like to take an agenda item out of order and take up Agenda Item 9D, which is Discussion of the Diversity Council. Do I have a motion to take up Agenda Item 9D?
Selectman Norrell, so moved.
Is there a second?
Marie D'Sousa.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Norrell?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
So in your packet, let me turn to it, in your packet, there's a copy of the resolution that was passed forming the council. We now are in a situation where that council is constituted by that resolution, can have as few as five and as many as nine people. But because of its constitution, minority representation controls. So we're in a position now where we have more people who are interested than we are able to seat according to the minority representation provision in the town charter. So what I'm suggesting we do is the following, so as we don't turn away people who are interested in contributing to the community. I need to find the right number here. One second, I have a draft amendment to the resolution. Here we go. So this is the original drafting and the copy of which that's in your agenda, and you can see in the red line what I'm proposing to do, so as we can include all of those people who are interested in participating. We would still have as many as five and not more than nine regular members, but we would also allow for the appointment of non-voting associate members as deemed appropriate by our board. This is a way of making sure that we can incorporate the interests and abilities of the people who are willing to come forward without running afoul of minority representation. Similarly, this is done by the AHRC. If you'll note, there are a member of, a number of, I think, I think they're also called associate members, who are non-voting members, but they still participate in the workings of the commission, including in the meetings and the discussions. So I want to make sure that we are being as inclusive as we can while still being in conformance with what the bounds of the law are. So, that's why I've asked to take this out of order. We have two additional applicants for the Diversity Council this evening. I think it's important that we try and include them in the process moving forward. I think that actually kind of runs counter to what the intention would be if we were not to do that, but we do need to do a little bit of housekeeping to make sure that we are playing within the lines. Any questions or comments on that?
Jason, Selectman Norrell, how would we decide who becomes a voting member versus a non-voting member, or would that be left to the committee or the council itself?
Specifically, it would be left to the Board of Selectmen. We are the appointment authority. So we decide, just like when we appoint a regular member or an alternate member to the Economic Development Commission or the Ethics Commission, that power is vested by Charter in the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Other questions or comments on this as a concept? If not, I would ask for a motion to amend the resolution to establish the Diversity Council as presented.
Marie D'Sousa will make a motion to amend the resolution for the Diversity Council as stated. Do you want me to include the verdict or just leave as stated sufficient?
I think as stated is sufficient. Peg can get the... I'll email her a copy of this as well.
Okay.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Norrell?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
So carried. Thank you, folks. Now we'll return to the regular call of the agenda and take up Boarding Commission resignation.
Selectman Norrell will move to accept the resignation from the Beautification Committee of Julian Hubbard with regret.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Norrell?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Next?
Make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Christina Chris Senzi from the Ethics Commission as an alternate member.
Selectman Muska will second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Norrell?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Peter Larisse from the Conservation Committee, regular member.
Is there a second?
Selectman Muska will second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Baker? Selectman Baker votes in the affirmative. Selectman Norrell?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
So carried. We don't have any reappointments, so now we move on to the new appointments. And this is Ms. Resto and Ms. Nadeau in particular, that I wanted to make that accommodation for in the Constitution of the Commission, of the council rather. So, the agenda notes that they would be appointed as regular members. We don't have space to do that for the Constitution of the Council, so I'd ask for a motion to appoint them as associate members.
Jason?
Yeah.
I just want clarification, are we able to accept one of them? Because we currently have five Democrats on that board, doesn't minority representation mean we can have six out of a nine-member board?
No, not more than a bare majority is the minority representation standard. So, for example, on the Board of Education, no one party can control more than five seats. Doesn't guarantee any seats to the minority party. It just means the majority party can't control more than a simple majority, not a supermajority, which that would be.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
I'll make a motion to appoint Gabriella Resto and Narda Nadeau to the Diversity Council as non-voting associate members for terms expiring August 20, 2024.
Is there a second?
Selectman Norrell will second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. I would just say for the record that I've known Ms. Resto's family for a very long time, and I think that she's going to be a great addition to the board. I don't believe I know Ms. Nadeau's family, but I certainly am familiar with the Resto family, and I'm glad that she's stepping forward. Any other comments? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Norrell?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Okay.
The motion that we appoint Kurt Kebeschel to the Zoning Board of Appeals, alternate member for a term expiring November 1, 2023.
There's a...
Marie D'Sousa will second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Norrell?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Our last new appointment.
Make a motion to appoint Christina Chris Senzi, the Ethics Commission, for regular member for a term expiring January 24, 2023.
Is there a second?
Selectman Muska will second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Norrell?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Now, we're on to the Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Committee, and I believe Ruth Calabrese is here with us. We'll check in to get situated. Good evening, how are you?
Good, hello everyone.
The floor is yours, you have as much time as you'd like.
Okay, so I can share my screen?
You should be able to.
Yeah. Moving the people.
We can, we can see your notes.
You can see my notes, you can see this one?
Yes.
Oh, that's not good. Let me go.
Now, if you start the slideshow from there, you work.
That's what I did before, right? You still see my notes?
Yeah, you're sharing the wrong screen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, where are the controls stopped here? Let's share the screen.
There you go.
Better?
Yeah.
Alright. I have, there. Okay, that's much better. We'll go back to the first page. Alright. So, I am here tonight just to give a briefing on the Plan of Conservation Development. Where we're at, it's a midpoint in the cycle for the plan, and also to make a request for some participation with an implementation committee. I'm sure you're all aware that the Plan of Conservation is a planning tool which establishes goals and actions for supporting the town's vision, and it's on this 10-year renewal cycle and just in the middle of it. And it's a good time to reassess what we've accomplished. If our goals make sense, if there's any changes we'd like to make, and make sure we're in alignment with regional and state plans of conservation and development. So, our vision is to keep East Windsor an attractive place to live by preserving our village agricultural and business character. And that's going to require carefully guided development in order to maintain and to manage the impacts of future growth and prepare us for aging population. So we're going to need to expand our economic development to ensure that we can secure community services and, at the same time, protect our community's environment and quality of life. So that's the objective of our POCD. And to get there, the plan outlines a couple dozen strategies that point to almost 100 action items. And these strategies are all kind of grouped in these three prongs of our vision. As outlined here, I won't need to repeat, but these are the 23 strategies that point to action items. And we have some notable accomplishments to date. With open space preservation, we've used the fee in lieu of for purchasing farmland. We have some marketing initiatives underway, the new real estate portfolio online for partnering with real estate brokerage companies for marketing available property in town. The EDC website is under construction, and we have gravel pit solar recreational facilities, improvements to the parks, and having the athletics on our town properties, and also efforts for restructuring business zoning with the warehouse point and five studies. So at this halfway point, we did this assessment. Jason and I actually breeze through, read through the action items to see where we've made progress over the years. And we're halfway and we're at about 25%. Action items have been touched in one way or another. Some moved forward organically, others were underway when the plan was written. So, we've done this and we've made some good accomplishments. We have action item number one was to create a Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Committee so that we could go through and check off progress and keep sponsors engaged and committed to follow-through. And so, last month, I spoke with or before the Planning and Zoning Commission, same presentation, different date. And they thought it was a good idea to get some focus on the plan. Joe Olet has agreed to be part of the Implementation Committee and to keep a standing agenda item on the PCC agenda to say, just put aside for working sessions on the plan. So this slide is really just a lift right out of the POCD saying this Implementation Committee would be members from different boards and commissions. We have interest from EDC in participating as well. Board of Selectmen, the town planner, and the town engineer. So, here we are halfway, good time to reassess, and I think tonight, we're really seeking volunteer representation from your board to join this Implementation Committee. Any thoughts or...
Well, not prompted not to volunteer them, but Alan makes the most sense as he's got the most familiarity with the PCC process and is the liaison to it. And his copious amounts of free time, I'm sure he appreciates that.
We're on mute.
That was strategic then, be on mute. I'd actually be happy to serve on that Implementation Committee.
That'd be great. I did include the action item table, kind of a little haphazardly, inserted it after, right, in the wrong spot. As you'll see in your handout, but if you've wanted to see see that, I could share the screen if you think it's worthwhile.
Yeah.
I will open. Stop, you know. Yeah, this is fine. So it starts on page, yeah, I fixed it for myself. The action items, they track by each one of the 23 strategies that I had on that slide, they have the three buckets. And so, this is where we're going to start. The Planning and Zoning Commission has asked the planning and development staff to go through this list and kind of boil up top 10 favorites for them to assess and set up some goals for action. So I've got a restructuring of this table underway. And what I want to do, just real quick, is show you how South Windsor reports out on their progress. This made me a little jealous, like I'm going to steal their format. So as they make their way through their plan, they're reporting out to their Planning and Zoning Commission progress notes and where things are. And I think this, you can see how the color code when things get implemented. So that's where I'd like to see us land. I mean, this is like the cover page of all the hard work behind it, but something with similar structure.
Yeah.
I agree.
Absolutely.
So we have Alan, welcome. I'll be staffing in the background. So, great, thank you very much.
At least to the 75% by the time, by the time the next five years goes by.
With a lot of nice, you know, food for the next provision, right?
Right.
So, I just want to take a second to give Ruth a lot of credit for picking this ball up. This is something that she came up with on her own in terms of a project that was in need of some TLC. And I think it's another example of being able to demonstrate that we have some really good people in that department that can help move the town forward. I can safely say that this would still be a backburner item without your leadership, so thank you for that.
My pleasure.
Absolutely, I think that's the biggest complaint. Absolutely. I think that's the biggest complaint I've had of the, and so many people have had of the POCD is we work so hard on it, we get it all done and then we put it away for 10 years and work so hard on it and get it all done and nothing ever gets accomplished except by mistake or by chance.
Right. And really, it came out of EDC where they were looking for something to focus on, right? And said, let's go to the, the plan of conservation and develop and see what's tagged up for us. And that's when I, you know, kind of took a deep dive in it and was a little taken aback by some of the action items that are continue to implement action items from 2004 POCD. And I went, wait a minute, it's time to really mean it. So.
We have a saying at work, stop starting and start finishing.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much.
What are we thinking, this committee, and what do we need to do to get the committee? Do we have to appoint this committee? Do we have to be assigned to it? I mean, how do we organize that? I think that's a board of selectmen responsibility.
Yeah, we were talking through that today in the office, whether it was board of selectmen or the planning and zoning commission. It may take a little more. Planning and zoning jumped right on it, wanting to put their agenda, you know, get that working session on their agenda. But the logistics of launching the committee, I'm not certain if it's an offshoot of planning and zoning or.
See what actually.
I'm sorry?
We'll look up what action item one says.
Oh. It's got both listed. I think I took it for beta moment.
It does have both listed, but it has PCC as the lead, assuming that the order is significant. I assume it is. Well, I mean, if we need to constitute it, we can constitute it. If it's a working group that's going to, you know, kind of steer the process, then I think that's a different thing.
What?
Ruth, we got kind of well and cold that it would be Alan and Joe Let's step forward. Who else?
Bob White from EDC expressed interest.
Okay.
And we have Clark Chapin, our director. And in the plan, they say town engineer, so that Glenn Norton, we would expect.
And is there opportunity to perhaps appoint a member at large?
Sure.
Is that really left to our devices to figure that out? Might be.
When you say member at large, you're talking about?
A member from the general.
From the general public? Yeah. If we're going to initiate a committee formally, I should think that could be part of it, right? Membership would be as detailed in that, right? It's the way it's written in the, the plan of conservation and development is the committee should include members from various boards, commissions, a member from the board of selectmen, town planner and the town engineer. It just says should.
Which is consistent with the plan.
If we have someone interested.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we would want somebody from, you know, conservation rag, since there is a conservation component to this.
Yeah, we could put out dealers to easily even wetlands.
So why don't we? I was talking with Clark earlier today about, about the need to formally constitute versus doing it at a working group level, but it does seem to. I don't know. You guys have an opinion about that?
I guess I originally, you know, assumed that, you know, the board of selectmen always, you know, creates commissions and committees and stuff like that. But I mean, you know, that after listening to you guys and thinking about it a little bit more, I mean, it's also could be just a subcommittee off from any other committee, right? I mean, what are they, the commission is really just going to be focusing people to get things done. So it's really an advisory commission. I mean, I guess it really could go either way.
So begging the board's indulgence, why don't, why don't Clark and I get together between now and April 1st and we'll come up with a recommendation to either formally constitute and a resolution to that effect or to keep it as a, at a working group level? Does that sound like a plan?
Yep.
Yep. That's good.
Ruth, thank you again.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too.
Easy.
Bye.
I don't know that I actually knew how to turn her share screen off.
I figured you'd want.
Um, so agenda item 9B, I need to ask that we postpone that because it's still under legal review. There were additional changes that were requested and it's being, still being flushed out by council. I expected to have it back, but I don't. So if I could ask for a motion to postpone, I'd appreciate that.
Blackman Muska will move to postpone 9B Broadbrook Fire memorandum of understanding.
Second.
Made, made and seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Blackman Nordell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Blackman D'Souza.
Aye.
Okay. Agenda item 9C is submitted at the request of Dr. Ron Paul. This is an agreement between the town and Priority Urgent Care, or I guess their urgent, urgent care medical center now, to provide COVID vaccine services on behalf of the town. We did a similar agreement with them when we started doing the COVID testing, and this is a liability protection to make sure that their interests and our interests are protected. The doctor has been doing it for the last month or so, but asked that this be included with a retro date to our first, our first COVID clinic. I don't think that's really necessary. I think we could do it prospectively and accomplish the same thing. But absent the relationship we have with Priority Urgent Care and with the folks in the town of Vernon and with North Central Health District, there is just no way we would be able to provide vaccine for people here in East Windsor. We have a standing waiting list that is flirting regularly with 400 people that are looking to get vaccinated in town. A fair number of those try and get their vaccine wherever they can, which is in East Windsor or at CBS or at Renshler Field or at one of the hospitals or wherever they can. But also another fair number of those people really won't go someplace else to get it. And so they, the service that we're providing to them is the means by which they're going to access the vaccine. So you guys are all aware of that, but I just would offer that up as background for it's, it's been a very productive relationship with Dr. Ron Paul and his team. I'd like it to continue to be for as long as we need it to be. And this is something he'd ask us to approve so we can continue that relationship. Questions or comments?
Jason, what does the overlap in the date do from the old contract to the new contract? Because now you've got an old contract that's now null and void. This one will take off, take over, but going back to the original start date will have any effect?
No. So the first agreement that we have is for COVID testing. This is for the COVID vaccination.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
It's two different services performed on two different days, both performed by his office, but.
Okay.
And we are confirmed, we're going to be doing 160 to 170 doses tomorrow.
Nice.
Most of those are second shots, but no, we're going to get 55 first doses. So could I have a motion to approve?
Selectman Nordell will move to approve the agreement with Urgent Care Medical Center, including Dr. Rand Paul and the town of East Windsor as presented.
Is there a second?
Second, Marika Souza.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Blackman Nordell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Blackman D'Souza.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. I'll get that executed into the doctor ASAP. Um, next, is Carol Hall on the line? Is Representative Hall with us?
I am here.
Good evening, Representative. How are you?
Good evening. I'm lovely. Unfortunately, I'm in a car right now, so I'm hoping you're going to be able to hear me clear enough. But we had kind of a long extended public safety committee meeting and I feared I'd be in front of my computer by now, but didn't happen. So I do apologize for the, for the car call.
Not a problem. So the, the agenda item before us is the Rails to Trails discussion. This is your initiative. It's something that you brought to, or you reached out to me about last week and I invited you to join the meeting tonight. Why don't you go ahead and share what your thoughts are around this?
Sure, would love to. So just in way of a little background to where this initiative kind of generated from is over 20 years ago, probably close to 25 years ago, originally I was sitting on the town council at that time and we had discussed in Enfield at the town council level, taking the freight line and turning it into a rails to trail. Unfortunately, at that time DOT had just renewed the 20-year lease on this freight line. So it kind of got stalled. We had, we had a, actually quite a large group of people that were very interested in the project and DOT said, nope, at this point, we just renewed his lease. We're going to give the gentleman an opportunity to do whatever he can do to secure contracts with businesses along the freight line and then, you know, we'll go from there. Well, fast forward 20 or 25 years later, many of you I know are really familiar with this particular line because it, it actually starts further up into Mass, but Mass has rail to trailed it already. So the line itself actually stopped at the state border now because Mass has already turned their freight line into a rail to trail. And I bet a lot of you have been on it, the gray trail. They have just agreed to extend it all the way to the state line. So as you know, it, it ends in East Long Meadow before it reaches the state line, but they've just got funds and secured to continue it all the way to the state of Connecticut, which is kind of exciting for them. So we, we, I say we in the sense of the town of Enfield had a meeting with DOT, our local delegation in Enfield. This has been a project for them on their radar for quite a long time, as obviously going back 20 years. We sat down with DOT and discussed the fact that we would like to take this line and turn it into a rail to trail. Many of you may or may not be aware that H.J. Bellevue that has police now does not have any contracts in Enfield with any businesses and he hasn't secured anything over the last 20 years. So that being said, we are aware that obviously.
Uh oh.
Better company. I'm sure you're all aware of that. But what we're arguing with, and I shouldn't. Is maybe even giving him the benefit of the doubt and working on a rails to trail right up to where he has contracts. If not that, then the folks that actually have the lease south of his lease, which runs from South Windsor into Hartford, could certainly pick up the one client that we're aware of in East Windsor. So we're certainly not trying to dissuade anybody from using what they already have in place. But what we are doing is we're trying to convince DOT not to sign another 20-year lease with this gentleman because we do want to pursue that. And I'm here tonight and Jason and I have talked about this. I think he mentioned it. We're, we're hoping that East Windsor will join us as a partner and we can make this a multi-state, multi-town rails to trail project. I will say that we understand that there's quite a lot of federal funding for greenway spaces, which would include rails to trails. So the next step that I'm moving on and I've, I've got my aid working on is trying to pull a meeting together with our federal delegation. So we actually are reaching out to Senator, Congressman Larson's office, Congressman Courtney's office, and we're also reaching out to the congressman from East Long Meadow, who is Congressman Neal, to kind of involve the federal delegation and get them on board at the very beginning. So they know that we're going to be looking for federal funding. This is certainly one of the initial heard from our federal partners that they're looking for. So let's see, one more item. We did Senator Anwar, myself and Senator Kissel sign on to a letter that we sent to DOT and our federal delegation expressing how we would really appreciate DOT not renewing the freight line lease and working with us on this rails to trail. So, and I did talk to Representative Foster earlier. She, she's 100% on board with us as well. She just didn't get back to us quick enough to sign on to the letter, but she's 100% on board with us. So it's a bipartisan effort and we're really hoping that East Windsor will join us and partner with us and move forward with this, this project. So I think I covered this as I could as quick as I could. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions. I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, before we, Representative Hall, thank you very much for that overview of the concept. Representative Foster is on the, the call as well. So I'd invite her to chime in if there's anything she wanted to add.
Oh, great.
And then, and then I'll turn it to the board for comment.
I, I don't think, I appreciate Representative Hall including me in this conversation and the process. I think that I am eager to support any efforts that make accessibility to healthy, active lifestyles easier for the people in our communities. It's consistent with my life work out. It's consistent with my life work outside of the Connecticut General Assembly in promoting healthy, active, built environments for folks. So I am eager to work with Representative Hall on this in any way that I can moving forward. And, you know, I'm just grateful to be included. This sounds like a wonderful opportunity. I don't know, some of you may know I ran a half marathon through our districts this summer, and I ended right where I think if it ends where Representative Hall said she'd give the benefit of the doubt, I ended my thirteen-point-one miles this summer right there, and it would have been very nice to not be on the roads and be on a rail trail instead. So I am excited to hopefully use what a lovely endeavor this is gonna be. So thank you for including me in the process, Representative Hall, and I look forward to working with this and some of the other stuff we've discussed collaborating on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I would just like to thank Representative Hall for her leadership on this. In after, actually, as it happened while she and I were on the phone, I was standing next to Jay Ursery from JR Russo and Associates. When we got off, I said, what's the real present benefit of a Rail to Trail? And he said, they are a wonderful thing. And that's been my experience as well. And thinking about that rail line and its nutrient systems or crop production services, depending on how you know it, that is the northernmost point on that rail line. There's actually a second business that's located at that same place. It's a brick company that used to be headquartered in Manchester that now kind of offloads there. That's the northernmost point that there's any commercial activity. I talked to the manager of Nutrient Systems, and he said that if that line weren't there, it would equate to something like three hundred additional dump truck loads of material coming onto that site per year, which is bad in itself, but it also would be preclusive for them because some of those trucks would have to be coming from Utah and Nevada. So they are dependent on that rail line. But in thinking about the vision that Representative Hall laid out, I think if the town were to get behind that concept and have it have the end of that line be effectively at Park Hill, at that rail crossing there, there's opportunity for increased pedestrian and bike traffic into the town park and into downtown Broadbrook to support area businesses. So I think geographically speaking, I don't know that we need to go all the way to Nutrient because there's no other natural offload point between Park Hill and Nutrient Systems. It's going through people's backyards at that point. But I think that does make a ton of sense, and particularly if there's an opportunity to work with the federal delegation and have this be a multi-state thing, I think this is a really, really good idea. So again, Carol, thank you for your leadership on that.
Well, I want to thank you for actually letting me, you know. And I know I just got off the phone with the town manager in Enfield, and he's super excited about it. They're putting this on their agenda because they would like to work on crafting a letter to DOT in support of the project and not the renewal of the freight lease for this portion anyway in Enfield. Because like I said before, he has no business contract with anybody at all in Enfield. So I certainly, I think Park is a perfect spot for it to stop. I agree with you a hundred percent. I think that's ideal. And Representative Foster and I actually talked about that particular location as well. So I think that's a great suggestion.
Are there any other comments or questions for members of the Board of Selectmen? Sarah.
Selectman Muska, I'd like to thank Representative Hall and Representative Foster. I would definitely be in support of this. As somebody who goes to Vernon and to some of the other trails around, I think it would be great to have this in our community. So I would definitely be in support of it. Thanks.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Maria De Souza, I was unfamiliar with what Rails to Trail was because I'm not a walker. I barely can move my legs sometimes, but I did find out that there's a hundred eighty-five miles of abandoned rail tracks that are currently throughout the state of Connecticut that have that function. And it's all been positive stuff stated online that I looked at for that. It would include that some of those trails are being used for precursors for the Boston Marathon. So if we don't interfere in East Windsor with any establishment, as you said, Jay, the two companies that are currently using that line, as long as we stop it and we don't interfere with their business, I don't have an issue with.
Anybody else?
Selectman Nordele, I think it's a great idea. I would love to see this happen. I do think you're gonna be up against a good fight, though, with this guy who currently holds the contract. He has a lot of money invested in new ties and rails that he's already purchased up in the Enfield area. He's very slow at putting any of it down and any progress, but he does seem to have invested a lot of money in material to reconstruct that line through the Enfield area.
So Charlie.
I definitely support it.
I will tell you that a lot of the money that he comes about are grant funds. So a lot of it is grant funds, and a lot of those things that you see along the Enfield lines, it's kind of sad because they've been sitting there for twenty years. So.
That's exactly what I was gonna make, is those were there when I was in high school. And what I remember clearly at the time, everybody was excited that somebody was investing in the rail line and gonna bring the rail line back. And those same rail ties and other appurtenances are still sitting right where they were twenty years ago.
Exactly.
To support Carol's point, they're not A.J. Bellevue's train tracks. He's the leaseholder, but that's it. And his lease is up.
And I will tell you this, and I won't get into a lot of the detail because it really, it's not terribly relevant for this conversation, but any work that he's done on the line in Enfield has actually come from businesses that he's gone to and demanded money from. And the businesses have paid if they do not have the deed right away from whenever their business was established. So one business was able to push back on him trying to get money out of them to work on the line that runs through their property by producing a deed that went back into eighteen-hundred for a right of way. But there's another business in town which ended up having to hire an attorney, negotiate down on the amount, and it's just, it wasn't a very pretty situation. So some of the funds that he works with actually businesses. But that being said, there's a lot of grant funds too that he's secured. And I think that's the.
Well, you know, I think you hit on another point in terms of hooking up with Congressman Larson, Congressman Courtney, and probably most importantly Congressman Neal, who chairs the House Ways and Means Committee. That guy is in a position to make stuff happen. So I think this is a very timely and appropriate thing for us to be considering. With the board's acquiescence, I'll draft a letter on our behalf in support of this as well, so that we can keep moving the ball on it, unless anybody wants to speak against the idea.
I would just say, you know, right off the bat, I'm generally in support of any kind of outdoor recreation, and I think the Rails to Trails lines in Connecticut have been successful. What I don't know is what any current landowners have for future plans on that. And as you illustrated with Crop Production Services, you know, rail transportation for a lot of things is a lot greener option than running trucks on the road and also, you know, makes a business viable as opposed to where it would not be viable in a neighborhood. So I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying that I don't know who else is out there that is maybe, you know, kind of percolating in their head that they got this piece of land, and maybe they're gonna do something with it that would also be a relevant use when we think about, you know, cars on roads and, you know, the amount of pollution that they produce, trucks and whatnot. You know, trains have been proven to be a much greener option. So not against it, just being a little cautionary on, you know, committing to it before I know more about what others are doing or what others might be planning that are landowners along that line.
The other thing that I would probably do before submitting the letter is have a conversation with the police chief. The reason being, those railroad lines as they are currently, that is the pathway in for all kinds of illegal ATV activity. And if we were to convert it to a Rail to Trail, I just want to make sure we're not putting in a highway for ATVs and that it's something that is pleasurable and preventable. So that's a conversation that I can have with Chief DiMarco, and I think we can get an answer on that pretty quickly. He's pretty plugged in on that stuff. He's a biker himself. So if there's nothing further on this, Representative Hall, Representative Foster, thank you so much for joining us tonight. And I do think this is a good time to be talking about a great idea.
Well, I appreciate the invitation, and thank you for listening. And I certainly will keep everybody in the loop when we have our federal delegation meeting because obviously I want East Windsor at the table for that meeting, and so I'll definitely keep you informed.
Thank you. I look forward to that.
It was lovely to see some of you all again. It's been a little while. I hope you all continue to stay healthy and safe, and some of you have vaccines very shortly on your horizon if you haven't gotten them already. So continue to stay healthy and be safe, everybody. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Bye, ladies.
Bye.
So that brings us to tax refunds.
Selectman Muska will move to approve the tax refunds totaling eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Baker.
Hi.
Selectman Nordele.
Hi.
Selectman Muska.
Hi.
Selectman De Souza.
Hi.
All right. Selectmen's reports. Where's mine? So as many of you heard, today the governor announced that a deal had been struck with MMCT concerning sports betting and iGaming in Connecticut. One of the conditions of that deal was the indefinite suspension of construction of a casino in East Windsor. Now that this is officially off the table, I think it's important to focus on revenue growth in town. The state has an obligation, I think, to compensate East Windsor for the three million dollars per year that we stood to gain from that project. And a portion of the nearly eighty million dollars the state stands to gain from this needs to be allocated for local support. To that end, I've had extensive conversations with our legislators and with municipal CEOs in the surrounding communities to advocate for exactly that. And we'll be sending a six-town joint letter to the governor asking for his consideration of that. Beyond that, we cannot allow a parcel with that much potential, thirty acres of commercial property between two highway exits, to be locked up and undevelopable for ten years. I think the tribes need to immediately make clear they're willing to sell it and provide commercial development to take place. I've stressed that point to Chairman Butler from the Pequots, and I'll do the same with the chairman of the Mohegan Sun Tribe once I speak with him. On the eleventh, Senator Anwar, Representative Foster, and I met with residents of the School Hill neighborhood to talk about remedies that may be available to them for contaminants in a community well. The well serves more than thirty homes and eighty-seven people, and they're afflicted by a common contaminant found in the area, nitrates. We are working with residents and with Connecticut Water to support a DPH revolving fund grant application to help remedy that situation. We're looking into a similar remedy to extend water down Plantation Road. On the seventeenth yesterday, I presented the board's budget to the Board of Finance. Our budget request, as you know, is an increase of point one-one percent over last year's budget or an additional eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Highlights include the establishment of a mental health team with the Police Department, supported by Community Services, Youth Service Bureau, and the School District, additional consultation funding to help with grant funding and economic development, funding for a cybersecurity audit, and additional funding to help with the inspection work in anticipation of enhanced economic development in the next year. The mental health team in particular is exciting. It's an out-of-the-box means of complying with last year's police accountability bill that requires social workers' integration into policing. We think our approach could be a model for other departments across the state. And last week, Chief DiMarco, his team and I met with Commissioner Ravella of the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection to share our idea. The commissioner was so impressed, he had a follow-up meeting scheduled for this week to share with the folks at Post C. We finished our meeting with the commissioner at about one-thirty-five, and by two o'clock, the Post C commander had already called Chief DiMarco saying, I understand there's something I need to see. The town is working on securing certification through Sustainable CT on an initiative which is initiative being led by our new town planner, Clark Chapin. Certification would allow the town to receive a dollar-for-dollar matching grant for qualifying projects up to a total of twenty thousand dollars. Community Services already has our first project identified, a mural right off the exit ramp of Exit Forty-Five as you come into town. The project will focus on the five villages, and the specific means of commemoration of those villages will be solicited from members of the community, and then the community will have an opportunity to come and help paint the mural. Once completed, it will be the largest such project in New England. That's all I have because I was busy doing damage control on the casino stuff until about five minutes before the meeting. So I'll leave it there and ask for the deputy for Selectmen's report.
Only two more days to spring. I'm looking forward to warm weather and the opening of various venues that have been closed, wishing everyone a safe and healthy spring. On March eighth, the Park and Recreation Commission held a meeting via Zoom, which I participated in. The park project updates were given. East Windsor Park has gained a half mile of usable land with a necessary removal of trees. On Tuesday the ninth, the meeting was held with the landscape architect to discuss the walking trails, benches, and plantings. The framing of the band show was started on the tenth and should not take too long to complete. They are looking into putting driveway aprons on the dog parks, state park, and the community gardens. Outdoor programming is being planned for the upcoming season, continuing upon any executive orders or guidelines. In lieu of the traditional Easter bunny breakfast, a bunny scavenger hunt will take place instead. See the Park and Recreation website for details. On March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the Broadbrook Friday Department Commission held a meeting via Zoom, which I attended briefly as they went into executive session. Chief Art Curry stated in his report that they had seventy-three calls, and training online is being done. Discussion of the upcoming budget presentation for March twenty-fourth took place. It was noted that April sixth, twenty-twenty-one, the department will be celebrating a hundred and twenty-five years in service. On March seventeenth, I attended via Zoom the Board of Finance meeting. Therefore, I was unable to attend the East Windsor Housing Authority meeting. The most notable agenda item was a presentation for the installation of solar panels on a community hall roof. That's all I have.
Thank you, madam. Sarah.
On March tenth, the Board of Education met via Zoom. Middle School Principal Timothy Fields and Library Media Specialist Jessica Fisher gave a school report focusing on the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one library program. During Read Across America Week, there were ninety books taken out of the library by students at the middle school. Mrs. Fisher has implemented a library-on-wheels mobile cart where students can have their requested books delivered to their classroom or be available for meal pickup for students who are fully remote. School Resource Officer Laura Devlin will be giving a talk to students at the middle school in regards to cyber bullying and social media. Superintendent Dr. Christine DeBarge noted that East Windsor could receive one point seven million. Superintendent Dr. Christine DeBarge noted that East Windsor could receive 1.7 million to 2.5 million dollars of COVID relief funds since the recent passing of the American Rescue Pact Act, excuse me, Rescue Plan Act at the federal level. Dr. DeBarge also reported that tentative plans are being made for summer school for all grade levels. And the goal is to run the program for a month immediately following the 4th of July. 210 people, mostly consisting of our school staff, were vaccinated on March 5th with the second dose of shots to be administered on April 6th. Discussions have started about bringing students back into the building five days a week. And a survey will go out to parents of students who are fully remote to see their plans about bringing their child back to school. The Veteran, the Veterans Commission met on March 11th, and there are plans to hold a Memorial Day parade this year. More details will follow soon. I did attend last night's Board of Finance meeting where there was a budget presentation from Jason, as well as the Board of Education. Jason did touch on quite a bit of what's happening on the town side. The Board of Education is coming in at 25,417,365, which is a 717,365 dollar increase, a two point at 2.9. The Board of Finance will hold a public hearing and their first budget workshop at 7:00 PM on March 24th. Finance Director Amy O'Toole indicated that the town has collected 96.4% of the budgeted 98.5% of taxes. And we have received half of our ECS funding to date, with the other half expected in May. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie?
On Tuesday, March 9th, I attended the Planning and Zoning meeting, which I'm sure Alan Baker will give us the details of. Wednesday, March 10th, I attended the Police Commission meeting. They had a pretty light meeting that night. The Police Department was preparing for their first tier one hearing for the pub, uh, the Police Accountability Bill and is confident that they will be found in good standing, um, in the first tier. On Wednesday, uh, March 17th, I attended the Board of Finance meeting, which Sarah and Jason already touched on. I think the Board of Selectmen presented a frugal, comprehensive budget for the fiscal year 2122. And I'm hopeful that the Board of Finance makes no adjustments to this budget without first seeing how the town reacts on the first budget referendum. On Friday, March 19th, it's, uh, 7:00 PM, the PTO and Dave Mosher will present a family fun trivia night. The event will be held via Zoom and the game will be played through the Kahoot app. You can go to the East Windsor PTO's Facebook page for more information on that. On March 22nd, the Warehouse Point Fire Department Ladies Auxiliary will be starting and hosting an Easter riddle and puzzle solving fundraiser. See the Warehouse Point Fire Department Facebook page for details on how to participate for that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Alan?
Okay, so Planning and Zoning is back, back to busy again. They received four applications that they'll be hearing at their next, uh, meeting. I think it's on the 23rd. Um, most notable of those four is SJK Properties LLC is, uh, back with a new, um, application for a text amendment for a multifamily development district. Um, I know that garnered a lot of public input last time, so I expect it will get a lot of interest this time as well. They also approved a nail salon and they approved the demo of a, of a building on Route 5, which allows the building of a new automobile workshop. So those are two new businesses, uh, in town or will be in town soon. Lastly, they spoke, uh, they were presented by Clark, a, um, proposed open space ordinance that is kind of getting worked on by Conservation Commission. And so they shopped it over there to see, uh, what kind of input the Planning and Zoning Commission had. And they did have some, actually some good input that, um, we'll have to take back as homework to, uh, make sure that we, we actually get a good ordinance together. So more to come on that. I had a interesting intersection of my professional and my civic life, uh, last week, I believe it was. The, both the fire departments are, um, getting rid of Firehouse software and going with the new software. And they needed help basically extracting their data from Firehouse and putting it in a format that could be imported into the new software. So I did that for both departments. It was kind of a lockdown memory lane there. A lot of fun. So, um, that's all I've got. You know, besides, I was also at the Board of Finance meeting. I intend on seeing the rest of them through too, as we go through the budget process. Uh, and I will echo Charlie's comments. I think that we put something together good that, uh, hopefully we'll be able to get some, uh, taxpayer input on without too many changes. That's all I have for you.
Thank you in particular for your help with that software stuff. I'm sure that saved both departments time and money. So thank you for that. We're going to move on to public participation. This is the public's second opportunity to address the board. It's, uh, we generally do not respond back. But if you'd like to speak, please identify yourself with your name and your address. And, um, we're happy to hear what you have to say. Seeing none, um, I will ask for a motion to go into executive session for the reasons stated in the, um, on the agenda. Can I have a motion?
Rita Sussa will make a motion to go into executive session, um, pertinent to Connecticut General Statute of State, Section 1-200, 6B negotiations, et cetera, et cetera, as listed there.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman Nordele?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
We're in executive session at 8:17. Peg, I do not expect that there will be any action taken upon, um, returning to open session.
And Jason, it's just the board?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thought we were done.
9:04, we're out of executive session. Is there any more business to come before the board? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Selectman Nordele will move to adjourn our regular meeting at 9:04.
Your second?
Yep.
Made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 You are adjourned at 9:04 PM.